So, I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Village of New Paltz zoning board of appeals. Tonight is October 14th, 2014, and it's about 7:03.
I'm not here.
Uh, no, this is Joanna. You're over there. Okay, so, we are calling the meeting to order. Good evening, my name is Katie Stilberger. I am the chair of the zoning board of appeals. On my very extreme right, we have Rogan O'Donnell, who is the secretary to the zoning board of appeals. We have Sally Rhodes, who is our village trustee, who is the representative to the zoning board of appeals. We have Dave Pacomo, Ellen Rocco, um, I could say Torres, yes. Mrs. Torres, Nikki Danskin, and our attorney, Victoria Paladoro. And over here, we have Bren White, who is the planner for the village. On tonight's agenda, we have one application for interpretation, two public hearings, four new applications, and approval of the minutes. And before we again begin, I would like to thank the building department for all the hard work they did, because a lot of this came in within the two-week limit. It was a very condensed time, and I appreciate the dispatch with which they provided us with all the information we needed. Now, Ellen had something that she wanted to ask. Yes, I was walking on Water Street the other day, and I noted 15 Water Street, that we approved backaways, and it struck me, it looked very large to me. And so, I would like to ask that the zoning board ask the building inspector to just double-check and make sure that in fact the project is going along as we approved it. Okay, so, thank you.
Have you come on, if you'd like?
Not right now, thank you. Um, we got a long agenda, I'm sorry, Rich. We can talk later. I want to get through the agenda. Um, so, um, and the first item we have before us tonight is the ZBA application for interpretation. It is ZBA 1416 regarding 2 Mohawk Avenue. So, we are accepting the application, and I would like to ask the applicants if they would like to come up to the table and provide a brief explanation for your appeal to the board.
Right, and to clarify this.
And, yeah, and may I just say that you will be making your full presentation at a public hearing at next month's board meeting. So, you're gonna make a presentation tonight, and there will be no public comment on the application at tonight's meeting. It will be reserved for the public hearing at the next meeting.
So, to clarify, this is an appeal of the certificates of occupancy and compliance that were granted at the end of August at 2 Mohawk Avenue. But it's not a, it's not an interpretation, but it's an appeal of certificates. And we are appealing as aggrieved parties, who include Teresa Fall, Terrence Duncan, and myself as a member of RS Julia LLC, Tim Rogers. The way we kind of organized our thoughts just for this preliminary discussion this evening is, I'm going to comment on code-related, New Paltz code-related information, and then Terrence was gonna comment on some case law as it relates to the settlement between the Village of New Paltz and the developer of the 2 Mohawk Avenue project. So, I prepared this, this brief two-page comment. "We are appealing to the Village of New Paltz zoning board because we care deeply about protecting and preserving the character of the Village of New Paltz, and the development at 2 Mohawk Avenue is out of character with the rest of the neighborhood. Protecting and preserving character is a statutory requirement of the ZBA, New York State Village Law 712B3C. Moreover, we believe the following three certificates pursuant to the development's building permits were issued in violation of Village Code and are therefore invalid, void, and should be retracted." So, the first certificate is a certificate of occupancy that was issued on August 20th pursuant to the permit 1426, which was issued in March of earlier this year. And that relates to what's known as Building C, constructed two-family dwelling with three bedrooms each. Second certificate of occupancy is related to permit 1435, which was issued in April of 2014. And that certificate of occupancy was issued again at the end of August, and that's related to Building D, same description as the first certificate of occupancy, constructed two-family dwelling with three bedrooms each. And then the third is a certificate of compliance, also issued at the end of August, related to permit 1413, which was issued in February of this year, and it's related to Buildings A and B. And curiously, the permit from February, the description is addition of one bedroom and renovation of one bathroom, but then the description changes for their certificate of compliance to four bedrooms total in original structure, five bedrooms total in new structure, nine bedrooms total for entire dwelling. So, I tried to, there's, there's so much going on regarding our appeal, so I tried to summarize it as best I could. So, here I'm describing the background and code, to give you a little sense of, of the project. Excerpts from the paragraphs 88 and 89 from the developer of 2 Mohawk Avenues, January 2013, against the village included the following. Quote, "These five building permit applications do not constitute one project, and therefore do not require site plan approval, and code specifically exempted single or two-family structure from such review, code 21223." And then, my format is basically, I'm commenting on either a, an excerpt from, from the action or the actual code itself. So, I'm pointing out here that the word "individual" is curiously excluded from the code, 212-12B, which states, "General regulations, crawf references, all new structures, and uses on lots of one acre or more other than individual, single, and two-family dwellings must comply with site plan review, 21223." Yes, Village Code does state that development projects may include as many as three detached two-family dwellings. The word "may" implies a review, not a guarantee to build as many as three. And again, I'm citing from code 21217D2, Lot Regulations. Exemptions to maximum number of principal buildings per lot, as many as three detached principal buildings may be permitted. Additionally, the project should have triggered site plan review by the village planning board since it indicated parking for greater than four vehicles. This is clearly stated in our Village Code. 21243D, Design Standards for Off-Street Parking Areas, General Standards for Parking Areas. Number one, design. Parking areas of four or more vehicles and access to this parking shall be designed and planned in accordance with accepted engineering and parking design principles, such as contained in the Eno Foundation Manual Parking. Number two, review. All plans shall be reviewed by the planning board under 21223 Site Plan Review. Then the code continues. 21223A, Building Inspector's Actions. "The building inspector shall not grant a building permit for any activity requiring site plan approval, which has not been approved by the planning board. The building inspector shall not issue a certificate of occupancy for any structure or activity which does not conform with an approved site plan." There are numerous examples why site plan review by the planning board to safeguard conformity for a project like this is important, and without it, this project is non-conforming. But we'll highlight just one broad issue relates to sidewalks and parking for the sake of time. Code 21223A 1K, Site Plan Review. Application Procedure for Site Plan Approval. "The location of sidewalks, walkways, and all other areas proposed to be devoted to pedestrian use." The developer has painted lines for 19 parking spots, and previously indicated 19 spots on their February 2014 site plan submitted to the building department, which we foiled. There are many more than 19 parking spots being used when all the non-strike parking areas are included, but we will, we will ignore that for now. For the sake of illustration, compare the number 19 with the number of bedrooms purported by the developer, nine in Buildings A and B, and six each in Buildings C and D. So, nine plus 12 equals 21, not 19. And if we refer to the following code, 21247A, Minimum Residential Off-Street Parking Requirements. Detached Single-Family and Two-Family Structures. Three spaces per dwelling unit containing a maximum of three bedrooms, plus one space for each additional bedroom unit. This means it would trigger the following requiring sidewalks and curbing, which are absent from this site. Again, code 21243C, Sidewalks and Curbing. "Any parking area for commercial use, such as a for-profit residential property," and I'm paraphrasing here, because this is not in the code. "We are interpreting a commercial use being any for-profit residential property where the owner of the property does not live on the site. Commercial use containing more than 20 spaces shall provide separate pedestrian ways, curbing, and lanes for customer loading. Such pedestrian ways shall take the form of sidewalks at least three feet wide, raised six inches above the parking area except for crossing streets or driveways, and curved as a protection for pedestrians. Such sidewalks shall be installed wherever pedestrian traffic occurs. The design of parking areas and sidewalks must prevent cars from overhanging or extending over sidewalks." So, without including requisite sidewalks or curbing, the project's impervious surface impact and how that would exacerbate the neighborhood stormwater problems where untreated silt and stormwater flows into the Walker River has been completely ignored. So, in conclusion, and then I'm gonna hand the baton to Terrence, certificates of occupancy and compliance state the following. "This confirms that the work listed below conforms to the provisions of Village of New Paltz Municipal Code. However, the project of 2 Mohawk Avenue is substantially not in conformity with Village Code, and therefore it was improper to issue such certificates. The issues of nonconformity concern matters of tenant's safety, such as parking and sidewalks, neighborhood character, which I mentioned in the first paragraph, and environmental integrity related to stormwater runoff." And we're all very familiar that there was a settlement between the village and 2 Mohawk's developer that was signed in the fall of 2003. And the village building department has incorrectly said, and this is a quote, "The village does not have much denial powers for this project. Conversely, our research indicates that the settlement was unlawful and is therefore invalid." And this is supported by various examples of case law, including those below. And here, there's a couple listed, and then Terrence will comment further.
Right, so, um...
We also have pictures, if anyone's not familiar with this.
Yeah, as Tim pointed, was that, um, there are very many code violations with this project. He just scratched the surface of major ones. Uh, there's a lot more which we'll get to in the public hearing. As far as the matter, and so, it's up to the building department, the inspectors, to make sure that all the things happen on the site, are happening according to code, that nothing would happen outside the code, unless it had been pre-approved by yourselves. Unfortunately, that oversight did not take place. And as Tim said, the, uh, the reasoning we were giving was that, uh, they felt that the settlement agreement with the village and the developer precluded them from having any input, and this simply is not the case. Uh, there's a wealth of case law that contradicts that opinion. Uh, the, the one that I best, um, is the Village of Upper Nyack versus the Christian Missionary Alliance. And it says in part, "Agreements by which public powers of the municipality are surrendered without express permission of the legislature in Albany are beyond the powers of the municipality and are void." In other words, the village board does not have the authority on its own to make an unlawful agreement. And this agreement was interpreted by the building department as giving the developer carte blanche to do whatever they wanted, regardless of the code. But the law, and case law is law, the law contradicts that. Another, which I think is very important, it's McGruder versus the City of Redwood. "We know of no power possessed by a board of trustees that will permit it in any manner to nullify illegal ordinance adopted by the municipality." In other words, it is beyond the power of the trustees to give someone permission to break the law. The law is binding on us all, including the people in government, and it cannot be a reach. So, um, I'll give you this. Uh, this is, well, let me see if I can get that. A sampling of case law. And the, the key issue for us in this is that down at the bottom there too. "The principle that contracts against public policy are void and unenforceable is based on the theory that such agreement is injurious to the interests of society in general, and that the only way to stop the making of such contracts is to refuse to enforce them." In other words, and if you look at the last part, "the Department of State, which is the state agency that has ultimate oversight over building departments and code enforcement officers." The Department of State has said very clearly that a code enforcement officer's power is limited to enforcement of the law as it is written, period. The officer has no power to modify or waive the zoning regulations, even if he or she disagrees with the requirements of the regulations. So that under these circumstances, even or maybe especially if they felt that the agreement authorized non-code compliant work, their obligation, their legal obligation, as defined by the Department of State, was to enforce the code regardless. Their obligation was to not enforce the agreement. And, um, so that's the law. And as far as the, um, well, it's really, why'd you get into too much detail? Oh, well, one other thing, no, I'm sorry, I've changed that. In terms of why we're contesting the COs, the code, um, in 21223 Site Plan Review, it states that in accordance with state law, or in accordance with Section 7-725A of the Village, New York Village Law, no building permit shall be issued, no structure or use established except in conformity with an approved site plan. And as Tim pointed out, the site plan in this case, because of the size of the parking, would have to be approved by the planning, and it was not. So, because there was no approved site plan, it was unlawful to issue building permits. And because the building permits were unlawful and void, that would make the COs unlawful and void also, since a certificate of occupancy is predicated on a building permit. And as well, the code says that, "No certificate of occupancy for such structure or use shall be issued until all the requirements of such a plan, the approved site plan, and any conditions attached have been met." So, without an approved site plan, approved by the planning board, it is unlawful to issue a building permit, and it is unlawful to issue a certificate of occupancy. And on that basis, we're contesting the CO.
Okay, thank you. I need to do one little thing of housekeeping. Could I have a motion to open discussion on ZBA 1416? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, um, I don't see, is Mark here?
Yes.
Oh, there you are, Mark. Would you like to come to the table and summarize your letter of determination for us, please?
Can I see the photograph?
Oh, oh, sorry. Sorry about that. Join us at the table?
Like, I understand, you know, their, their argument, but they're leaving out one important thing, you know? It is our job to enforce the code. Code also allows for Article 78. Article 78 was enforced from the State Supreme Court. The code says we have to follow the Article 78. So, our job, we are following the codes. So, I don't understand the argument where you're saying that it is our obligation to enforce the code, which we did in this case, because the applicant filed for Article 78, which again is in the state and local codes. So, that falls in the codes also. The, uh, the agreement with the village, whether they like it with the village or not, it's our job to enforce Article 78, which is part of the codes. So, we are still enforcing the codes. And the problem with the Article 78, which is what you guys are appealing, which I understand that, but again, Article 78 has to be appealed by a appellate court, not a local zoning court. So, you know, most of my determinations based on that this, this cannot be seen here at this, at this level, because it's already went to Article 78, which is enforced by the codes. And Article 78 is a, is a, it's just that, has to be appealed by its appellate court.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Mark, did you sign any site plans?
No, the article, the Article 78 required that the engineer review the site plan parking, which they did.
Doesn't say that in the settlement.
Oh, yes, it does. It's the very last page of the settlement.
Okay.
I have a copy of that somewhere.
Let's save this then for the hearing next week.
Well, that's also, I think it was also my determination to... Plans and parking for the project for the construction of 2 Mohawk Avenue were to be reviewed and approved by the village engineer, which they were.
So, is there a signed copy of the site plan anywhere?
There should be from the...
Okay, because we foiled it and you didn't get it.
Well, I don't tell the toils.
And...
But I know the, uh, and we're doing it...
It's not, the site plans can't be...
Well, and Article 78 is part of the New York State zoning and the local zoning codes. And Article 78 gets any applicant's ability to appeal any decision made by this board, which applies to all zoning codes. He, the applicant, I already, there's one or agreement with the village, which again, I don't control that part. They, they presented us with a, with a signed New York State Supreme Article 78 agreement, which is now code, because it's Article 78, and we follow this Article 78, which gets again, applies to code. And any disagreement with this Article 78 has to be done in the appellate court, not a zoning court. This...
Do you have any case law that shows that?
I don't need a case law of that.
I think, I think that this is why we're going to have a hearing.
Yeah, well, again, I don't know if you can have a hearing, because when you have a hearing, it opens up this case, which again, you're, you're trying to supersede the State Supreme Court.
So, they're actually, although practically speaking, it seems to be an appeal of the Article 78 proceeding, um, what they applied for is an appeal of a particular section of... The appeal of the CO is pursuant to a particular section of code. So, there is a small difference, and so, the ZBA does have to process the application.
Yeah, but that code, that code doesn't apply to this, because they were...
Well, that's the question for the board.
Okay, that's...
Well, the Article 78 superseded the site plan. So, the site plan review does not apply to this anymore. So, any, any code...
We're not appealing, we're not giving a site plan, we're appealing certificates.
Still has an obligation to process.
Well, that's part of the, that was part of, that's the code you're appealing.
How they come down, you know, it's for the board to decide, but they still have to go through the steps and process the application.
Well, I just, if you do, I just, you know, want to make sure you understand that once you open a case up, you are actually opening, you're doing a case. You're, you're doing something that might not be allowed, I don't know if it's 78. But I, you can do it either way, I'm just giving my advice.
We are going to heed counsel's advice, and so, to that end, first of all, um...
Now, but can you, can you see all the, I guess what I'm confused too, is originally, it was interpretation, which I understand is not an appeal to the site plan.
Basically...
No, it's not an appeal of the site plan. It's an appeal of the certificates of occupancy and compliance. And I'm very glad that you've obviously clarified that for this court. This is not a, this is not an appeal of site plan. This is an appeal of the certificates.
That's the code you're appealing. Your, your, the code you're appealing is 21259, correct?
Okay, we are going to...
That's the site plan code. No, 21223, sorry, it's the site plan review is the code.
Okay, so, it's an appeal slash interpretation, because the appeal involves the interpretation of a particular section of the zoning law.
Okay, and so, we are gonna follow counsel's advice. And I'm first going to ask for a motion to classify the application as a type-two secret action. So, could I have a motion to an effect? And a second.
Explain to us why that's required.
Okay, Victoria, sure.
Sure, so, under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, secret, every action of a zoning board or planning board is subject to environmental review. So, um, there are some exceptions. So, an area variance for a single-family home is automatically type-two, which means exempt. Um, interpretations are also on the type-two list. So, this is just for housekeeping, saying that you don't have to go through an environmental review process for this particular application.
That plain English helps.
Yeah.
Second. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion has carried. Then I would like to ask for a motion to refer the application to the planning board in accordance with 21259A4, which requires that, quote, "all," which requires that "all," quote, "appeals and applications," unquote, be referred to the planning board at least 30 days before a public hearing. Could I have a motion to that effect? Okay, any discussion?
So, if it is referred back to the planning board?
Yes.
They will take it up in November, and then, maybe it will come back to us, or it's...
Well, they may take it up at their next meeting, which would still be October.
Oh, that's not... Yeah, it's just...
They missed the deadline to get on November.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
They meet the first Tuesday in November.
Yeah.
Okay, so then they would meet the first Tuesday in November. We're gonna meet the second Tuesday in November.
Right, am I, am I right? First Tuesday?
First and third Tuesdays.
Okay, so the calendar works.
Yes.
And even if it, even if you don't hear back from them, if you've given them 30 days, then you're okay.
Okay, so, is there a second on that motion? Did we vote on it?
Maybe, yeah.
Thank you. So, we'd need to vote on this, so, right?
Yes.
Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, the motion has carried. And now I'm going to ask for a motion to set a public hearing for November 11th, 2014, at 7:00 PM.
I'll move.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that is...
Timly.
Um, and that is regardless of what happens with the planning board?
Victoria.
If, if the planning board wants more time to respond, um, you can continue the public hearing, especially if there's gonna be a lot of public comment. You're not required to close it in one night, and that may, that may be what you want to do.
Okay. Okay. And then, let me just say, pursuant to Section 21259A5, the applicant is responsible for mailing public hearing notices. An affidavit of mailing should be provided to the ZBA prior to the public hearing. The village is responsible for publishing the... The village is responsible for publishing the notice of the public hearing in the newspaper. And the zoning law requires that a sign be posted on the subject property. Because the applicant is not the owner of the property, this requirement may be difficult to satisfy. I believe Mr. Cafrey is here at the meeting, so perhaps you could work something out with him to post.
Would you give permission for them to place a sign on your property regarding the public hearing?
Okay. Was that a yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I just wanted to point out the village hall is closed on that Tuesday night.
On the 11th?
It's better. Hall is closed in observation. So I don't know that whether or not you might be in the public. I'll refer to the attorney, but I just wanted to point that out before having this tomorrow.
Well... So that's postponed until our following meeting? Wait, I can't...
What if I just agree to the long story?
Okay. The zoning, the zoning law requires that when there's an application, that a sign be placed on the property saying, you know, there will be a public hearing on an application involving this property on the date and time, et cetera. And so they need permission to put a sign on your property.
I'm going to reserve that permission. I just, I want to speak to somebody first. I'm going to reserve that. So I'm not going to grant permission right now. I'm not saying, I won't grant it, but I'm just not going to grant it right now.
Okay, and so the other option for the board is you do have some ability to waive the sign provision if it burdens some cost to the applicant. And you may want to consider waiving it in this case, it's because it's awkward to put a sign on somebody else's property.
Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion to that effect? To waive the requirement that the property actually has a sign?
The, one of our members?
Yes.
Lives right across the street, so we can put the sign on her property.
That would, I mean, that would be fine, but I think you should still waive the requirement that it be on the particular...
Yeah, I think legally, we would like to waive the requirement, and there's nothing to prevent you from doing that, but...
On a point of order, why are you waiving?
Oh, thank you, that was my question too. Sounds like law has been waived in the past. Why don't we not waive that?
Well, because it cannot, I mean, if Mr. Cafrey does not allow it to be placed on his property, we cannot oblige him to do that.
Well, what if we're not?
You could require him to do it. Can't they, Victoria?
He's not the applicant.
Right.
And so you can't force somebody else to put a sign on his property.
Unless he volunteers.
Right.
And he is not volunteering.
He has just said he's not volunteering.
And I think the committee should note that.
One of the applicants lives across the street. We could put the sign on that person's property. That's an applicant putting it on their property.
Takes the pressure off the people.
Oh, okay, so the, an applicant is putting it on property that is adjacent, but it's not the property that is actually the subject of the action. So I think we need to make some sort of...
But anyone could put a sign up on any property.
You can't put a sign on someone else's property.
You could put it on any property you want. But you're not required to put it on his.
You can, you don't need us to say, oh, you can put it on the property across the street. What you need us to say is you do not have a legal obligation to try and get it on the property that you don't own. That's what we're looking to waive. And I mean, we could recommend that it be placed on property adjacent?
I think you ought to just note in the minutes that the, whatever Mr. Cafrey is, the respondent has, has said he will not put it on his property.
Well, he said he wants to consult, but he's, he's not said he won't. He said he wants to consult.
He wants to reserve the right to post the sign about the public notice. That's what he said.
Yes, so...
Reserve the right, why?
I imagine he wants to consult with legal counsel.
Let the minutes show, no?
But we still need to make it possible for the applicants to comply with all the requirements of the law. And in this case, one of the requirements is that the sign be placed on the property that they don't own. So if we waive the requirement that they place it on the property they don't own, that doesn't mean that they can't put it on there should Mr. Cafrey decide to allow it. But it just means that if Mr. Cafrey doesn't allow it, it doesn't create an obstacle for going forward.
I would rely on your counsel's advice, because this is, first of all, an interpretation to the ZBA is not an appeal for a variance.
Correct, they're different.
It is an appeal for an interpretation, and therefore, I'm not sure how you could require them to post a sign.
But it's an, but it's an interpretation, but it's also an appeal for issuance of a permit for a specific property. And so that's why it relates back to the property.
It is, we intended it as an appeal of the COs, as an appeal of the action of the building department, which is a standard procedure with ZBA's. I don't know why it was written down or entered as a request for an appeal, because that's really not...
Well, an appeal and an interpretation are really one and the same, because you can't determine the appeal without interpreting the code, for the most part. And in this case, you're asking the board to interpret a section of the code.
Okay.
But in that sense, they are a third party in that sense.
Correct, the owner is not a party to the action.
He is not a party.
And that's why you can't legally require him to put the sign up.
If he were appealing to this board, he would have to post.
Correct.
That's my question. He is not a party to this appeal, and therefore, the party that is appealing cannot legally post.
On that property.
And so I would think you could have waived the requirement for this party.
Exactly, I think that's what the board should do.
Not Mr. Cafrey.
Well, there is no requirement for him, correct? Because he's not appealing.
It's not Mr. Cafrey who's required.
Right, we're not waiving anything. So you could, you could waive the requirement for these applicants to place a sign on Mr. Cafrey's property.
Which is what I was asking for.
Based on the fact that the cost imposed on the applicant would be disproportionate. Those are the only criteria for waiving it.
Okay, so then, may I have a motion to waive the requirement upon these applicants to place...
Yeah, I'll make the motion. Some move.
Do you want to let them put the sign on your property?
Okay, we are, we, all right, so let's stop. We have a motion on the table, and the motion is to waive the requirement that the applicants place a sign on Mr. Cafrey's property.
A second.
Okay, any discussion?
Would you clarify that to say the applicant not being Mr. Cafrey?
Yes, would you add that into the motion, please? Since the applicant does not own the property upon which the appeal is being made, the zoning board of appeal will waive the sign requirements since they do not have the legal right to place a sign on the property.
And the owner has denied permission.
Well, the owner hasn't granted permission. Okay. All in favor? Any dissensions? The motion has passed. But we have still a problem, which is that the date is Veterans Day, and everything would be paid time and a half according to the Village Code. Can we change the day on which we have the...
You can, you can set the public hearing for whatever night you want, but you need to make sure there's no conflict.
So can we set, instead of for our first meeting in November, can we set for our second meeting in November?
Yes.
We don't have a second meeting.
Oh, because it's Thanksgiving?
We need one, some month. If we were to go to... Yeah, we run into the planning board.
Right.
Consult the council.
Just a moment. In trying to run around the village, it seems to me that it's hard. It makes it clear that most properties don't have address.
And you're closer to them when you're walking around than when you're talking around.
Yes.
So often, the congressional squad and the police have to have everything.
When you say...
I've got the village calendar on.
Okay. Does that work for people? I'm going to be out of, out of...
Then it doesn't work.
Then it doesn't work.
Yeah, I'm going to be out of there.
All right, all right. Are there any other veterans in this room?
Well, wait, it's not just the people in this room. This is a holiday. I said I thought Terry was. We want the public to...
So wait, I need to go to the next one.
And because it's a holiday, it's out of respect for there.
Yeah, I think we do it out of respect for veterans. So the 25th of November, would that be a problem?
That is going to be an environmental policy commission meeting support Tuesday of the month.
You're not going to be here, Katie?
I am not going to be here, no. I'm going to be in Ann Arbor that day.
Then I, I'm not going to vote for you, Ash. You're the chair with the...
Do you just want to move it to December?
December?
How about the first, we can't have it less than 30 days, can we?
No, I don't think we can do less than 30 days.
Wednesday, November 19.
Wednesday, November 19, Wednesday. That works for me. Wednesday, November 19.
If we're sure.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just calling everybody right now. Does Wednesday the 19th?
What's Thursday the 19th?
No.
What's Tuesday the 19th? What's Tuesday the 18th?
Planning board.
Oh, right, that's the, okay.
Yeah, so Wednesday the 19th?
That's okay.
Sally?
Fine, you don't need me, but fine.
We need you. Broden? Okay, Anne Bren?
Looks okay.
Okay, Mark? Okay. So...
What's the date?
It's Wednesday the 19th of November. Of November, so...
I have school board.
You can't do it towards the end of October?
It wouldn't have 30 days.
So many meetings and stuff, something.
Well, unless you're on the board.
Right. Getting on a separate...
All right.
It's a quirk of the hood.
Yeah, as I say, that's a weird one.
It is.
Okay, so...
You need a motion?
I need to undo the first motion, right?
Well, you can just...
No, we didn't make a motion for the...
May I just make a point?
What?
Does anybody else see a conflict of interest sending this to the planning board or one of the plaintiffs? So applicant is a member of the planning board?
Wrong, wrong spelling.
Okay, wait, wait, okay.
If we can't do it in November...
We're doing it in November, the 20th.
Wait a second, but that's not the Tuesday. The, I want to know what the disadvantage is to waiting until our December meeting? That's, I'm not arguing in favor of that.
I think we owe it to the applicants. Yeah, we, we've got a lot of public hearings coming up. I think we owe it to the applicants to do it as expediently as we can do it.
So we're going to do all of our upcoming public hearings on that Wednesday night?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Well, I would prefer that it is done on Tuesday the 9th of December, because I have school board on the 18th, or the 19th.
So there's two issues before the board right now. One is, do you want to set a special meeting date for November? Since your regular meeting date in November, the village hall is closed. So that would be to process all applications. And then second, what night do you want to have the public hearing specifically on this application?
Well, I think we can agree that we don't want to have it on November 11th. So that was the first issue?
Yeah.
I think we're all in agreement that we're not holding it on Veterans Day.
So, I mean, do you want to cancel your November meeting completely? And then move everyone to December?
I would love you to have a November meeting at some point.
Okay, we're, we're going to get there. But for this one, if you are saying, and Terry, if you agree, that you would like to simply have it heard at the, at the December meeting, I think there's no problem with that. If the applicants are saying they would like to wait the month and have it in December, on December 9th, we're not going to object? So is that what you would like?
Yes.
Okay, so could I have... Broden, did we actually pass that?
You didn't.
We didn't change the date.
You didn't change the date, but the motion carried.
Okay, so could I have an...
Can I amend it?
Yeah, could I have an amendment to the motion establishing the public hearing for ZBA 1416, changing the date from November 11th, 2014, to December 9th, 2014?
Yeah, I'll make the amendment.
Okay, you want to second this?
I will.
Okay. All in favor? The motion has carried.
December, Wednesday, November?
December 9th, which would be our regular meeting in December.
Katie, do you want to cancel your November meeting?
I don't know. I think that there are going to be people I don't know. I think that there are gonna be people who may want to have their issues heard more expediently, and so we obviously aren't gonna be able to have the meeting on the eleventh, but we could look to having some December, some November business on the twenty-fifth. That's the first. The nineteenth. Excuse me, the nineteenth, the first reasonable time when we can meet. So let me just.
The nineteenth is what day?
It's a Wednesday.
Okay, so let me just ask. Ma, I have a certain discomfort with changing the day of the week. Is that just me being crazy?
Well, we have cleared that the village hall is available on that Wednesday. And we don't have any other, I mean, obviously, the eleventh is a federal holiday. It is a holiday that is under veterans.
For sure, I have no problem with that.
So if we did it on a Tuesday, we would be either stepping on the toes of the planning board, which I don't think is a good idea, or. The Environmental Policy Commission. The Environmental Policy Commission. And then becomes a concept of keeping it, because we can only get videographer, usually we can only get a videographer for one.
Where's the one on the twenty-sixth?
Well, that's getting really close to Thanksgiving. I mean, I think that makes it. But the nineteenth is a Wednesday, the twenty-sixth is a Wednesday. I think the nineteenth.
Twenty-fifth.
The twenty-fifth is the Environmental Planning Commission.
Take press.
But Joanna is on it.
And you're gonna be here?
No, no, I'm gonna be here then. Joanna is on it.
You're not gonna be here?
I'm gonna be here. But Joanna is on it, and I don't think we should make Joanna choose between two committees. No, she's. Who's up first?
No, what's up first?
As long as it's only, as long as we do this around the holidays, because of the holidays, they move their regular scheduled meeting to another night, as long as it's only once in a while and you're not purposefully having any. Thank you, Joanna. Okay, so you need a motion to cancel the November eleventh meeting instead of specifying November.
All in one motion?
Yes.
Okay, so. I move that we cancel the November eleventh ZBA meeting, and instead we meet on Wednesday, December, uh, November.
Keep it a few hours.
Nineteen. Nineteen. Okay. Do I have a second on that?
Yeah, I second it.
Okay, yes, just hold off a moment. All right, so there is a motion on the table to change our regular meeting from November eleventh to November nineteen? All in favor?
Yes, but I specified the date, so there's no confusion.
Yes, you did. So you said that we would not have it on Tuesday, November eleventh. We wouldn't have it on Wednesday, November nineteenth. So all in favor of that motion? Aye. All opposed? The motion has passed. Zipping right along. Okay, the second item on the agenda is, just a second, let me. We're keeping right here for this. Okay, so the next ZBA application. Before us is ZBA fourteen fifteen, requesting a variance for an additional bedroom at eighteen Mohawk Avenue. May I have a motion to discuss ZBA fourteen fifteen? May I have a second? Second. All in favor?
Then we need to move to change the order of the agenda.
The motion has passed.
Katie?
Yes.
May I call for a point of order?
Yes.
Your agenda calls for hearings next. You need to have a motion to change the agenda.
To move the one application ahead.
Your agenda calls for public hearings.
Oh.
For Mr. Litten and for Mr. Collet. You are asking for a change of order of the day. You need a motion.
Okay. Excuse me, so could I have a motion to change the order of the agenda? And let me explain to people, we are doing this because we would like to have legal counsel here for this next item, and then legal counsel will be able to go home. So could I have a motion to change the order of the agenda so that we hear ZBA fourteen fifteen prior to the public hearings? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so. Okay, hang on, I gotta get myself together. This. Which area is? It's all, and it's there, and those others there, yes. Now, I need the, I need the memo from the planning director. Motion to change the order of the day, and I have legal counsel for the next one, ZBA fourteen. I need the, there should be a memo sent again that I don't have. Bren, did you have a memo for us?
Yes, it was emailed and should be in your head here.
Okay.
I don't have it.
I, okay, what do you got?
Well, let's see, maybe it's in the copy I was handed today.
Is this, this is Bren's? Bren, I need Bren's memo. If it's, I can get it out of my email. For fourteen fifteen? Yeah, it's right here, it's on the second page. It's on the second page, I'm sorry, I'm just not. Wait, here, if you want, you can just. See your. Thank you. Oh, it's right in front of me, okay. Wait, you give that back to her, I'm sorry. It's right here in front of me. Okay, so the memo from the planning director for ZBA fourteen fifteen. This application requests the allowance of six bedrooms in this one family home at eighteen Mohawk Street. Actually, as well, I'm sorry, let me ask the applicant to come to the table. Is Mr. Olin here? Okay. Okay, so Mr. Olin is not here. The applicant for eighteen Mohawk Street? Okay, this application requests the allowance of six bedrooms in this one family home at eighteen Mohawk Street. Based on building department records, Mr. Olin purchased the house in May of twenty oh four. In September of that same year, a letter was written up, I'm assuming by a building inspector, discussing the number of bedrooms. It reads, "The doors and partition have been removed to create a single bedroom upstairs, and the room in the basement is now okay for the bedroom." Okay to close this file and issue CC, Certificate of Occupancy. There was five bedrooms in this unit, and Mr. Olin wanted a sixth in the basement, so the two bedrooms upstairs has been changed to one, and now the one in the basement is allowed. There is still a total of five bedrooms, one upstairs, three on the first floor, and one in the basement. It appears from the upstairs plan that it is not one bedroom upstairs, but two, and the doors have been replaced for privacy. Based on the square footage of the parcel in question, this house is allowed only four bedrooms. However, depending on the village code that was in place when the fifth bedroom was put in, it may be considered legally non-conforming. It is unclear when the fifth bedroom was put in. In December of nineteen eighty-nine, the building claimed two bedrooms. Okay, the planning board reviewed this application and made the following motion. Two motions were made for this application, one to positively recommend this application and one to negatively recommend this application. Both motions failed, so no recommendation by the planning board was made. And once again, I ask, is Mr. Olin here to speak about this application? Could we move this to December due to his absence? I think that it would be appropriate to move this to the December ninth meeting, and could we communicate with Mr. Olin that we would be happy to hear from him? But our attorney's here, and I'd like to hear from her on this. Okay. Seems like we're not out of their gray area. Well, so, I mean, one thing that the application is missing, I did the calculation, and in order to have six bedrooms, they need, I believe, and Bren, you can check this, fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty square feet, but the application doesn't indicate how many square feet they have on the lot, so I don't know how big of a variance he's collecting.
It does say point two three acres on the, on the plan, which converts to, I believe, ten thousand eighteen square feet.
Okay, so that's a very big.
So that would allow four bedrooms.
Right.
Under, you know, under ordinary circumstances.
So.
That would allow four bedrooms.
I guess the first step is the, I guess we should work with the village building inspector to determine whether this has five bedrooms as a legal pre-existing use, or whether it's only permitted four and he needs a variance for two bedrooms.
So may I ask a question? In the doing of that, as part and parcel of that, when I looked at the property from the street, so I don't know what the back looks like, the roof is like this facing the street.
Okay.
So if there's a dormer in back.
You can't tell.
I can't tell. My understanding is that there has never been a building permit for a dormer in back. So what I wanna know is whether the amount, given the height of the walls, which I guess have to be five feet four inches or five feet something like that, and the amount of headspace because of the angle, which is of the ceiling, the amount allocated for a bedroom has to be free, clear, clear space with such a ceiling. I mean, I can read it too exactly.
You wanna, there's actually room for two bedrooms up there.
Is there room for one bedroom up there? Because the bathroom takes up some space. So what are we really dealing with? And is the bedroom in the basement a legal bedroom anyway, which I believe it is not?
Well, so in some sense, we're gonna be, it looks like you're gonna be stuck, and this is the first I've seen the memo from Bren, but it looks like you're gonna be stuck with at least one bedroom in the attic because it's been there.
For how long?
And it seems as if the building inspector has signed off on it and issued a certificate of compliance.
This is a two-story building?
No, I don't.
It's an expanded.
I was there in the spectrum, I could explain.
Oh, good. Oh, good.
It's like a cave up in the attic. And previous inspectors, I don't know, back in two thousand, or whatever, this, I forget the year, there was, you know, it's big like cave, you just walk straight up the stairs, you got the bathroom straight ahead. You got a bedroom on each side. Somewhere along the line, a building inspector convinced the board, one of the, I fear, was planning board, zoning board, to allow them to do a bedroom in the basement and take the two upstairs and convert it to one, which you could never have done anyways, because it's, they just took the doors out, it was definitely two separate rooms. They should never let them do that in the beginning. They should just left it, the two bedrooms upstairs. Since that time, they put the doors back up, which was simple because the wall's only four foot. So they put two doors up, and now you have the two original bedrooms back upstairs, and you have the one bedroom that was downstairs in the basement that was only supposed to be there if one of the bedrooms upstairs were removed. So.
But these are. My question is.
Basement to me is the dangerous one.
So five are legal, though, is what you're saying?
Five are legal, yeah. It was five up there. Somewhere along the line, he had five, it was pre-existing on the form.
On point of order, do your files justify that five are legal?
Yes, yeah.
In the files downstairs?
Well, it doesn't even matter what was previous. He was granted a zoning board variance or a site plan for it. It was either, so he went to one of the boards, zoning board or planning board, I can't remember.
You know which one?
Um, it would probably have to be, probably have to be zoning board, I'm guessing, I don't know. One of the boards.
He got approval for the motion, the whole thing be tamedled and this be investigated.
He got approval from one of the boards.
Okay, wait, hold on.
My question, is this two-story building or three-story building?
It's a two-story, but there's a bedroom in the basement. Which to me, the bedroom, if you're gonna have them remove a room, I would suggest not removing the attic room, remove the basement room, is that, to me, is the dangerous one.
Why? Why is it dangerous?
It's in the basement, it gets flooded. I can't remember exactly this part, but I think you either, you had to go out, up the stairs. When you go down the basement stairs, which is open wall, you see the furnace, to the, to the left, was the door into the bedroom. I think, if I can remember right, there was another door to let into the garage. So you technically, if there's a fire to stairs, you can only get out to the garage. Which shouldn't have been loud, I don't know why they did this then.
So, but we can't allow something that is, goes against like fire.
Well, the code's changed since then, so why would it have been allowed back then? Yeah, you're not reproving.
Okay, so the building permit that was requested for this building dated September thirteenth, two thousand four, is for removal of two doors and petition, partition to create one bedroom.
But there's no petition.
Notice the partition.
But the partitions apparently weren't removed, just the doors were removed.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but according to that. There's no petition there.
Yeah, you can see it right there, it's just, there's nothing to remove, and even if you remove it, it's still two rooms.
So that was the two thousand and four version of the permit, when he purported to create one room out of the two.
Yeah, yeah, he took those doors away, they had one big open room.
Right. So they need, they need a permit because now they have the doors back up, so it's operating as two bedrooms.
How did they get the doors back up without permission?
Well, he did, that's why they.
That's why they're back here.
We went to do a fire and safety inspection, and I saw that, and kind of picked it up on the permits and stuff.
So is this an enforcement action? Because it's.
Yeah, he's either gotta remove it or get a variance.
If this is an enforcement action, I'm gonna recommend the board not put it off till December, because the way, the way it works is that the village can't go after him in court. The appeal automatically states the village's ability to go after him. And so if you put it off for two months, that's two more months, that the village is just waiting for him to fix it. If you process it more quickly, then eventually the village can go after him for fines if he doesn't comply.
So, but my question also is, my understanding is that if a change is requested to, if there's a non, if there are non-conformance issues and a change is requested, that doesn't that then require that all be, with that granting of a change, that all, that it all be brought into conformance? Because if so, then he should only have four bedrooms. The basement bedroom, we can't abrogate state fire law, he can't have that bathroom. Whether some building inspector approved that or not, can we allow that?
If it was approved at the time under an old building code, it can continue.
Okay.
So what? So you can't amend it, you can't allow him to make something that's gonna be more non-conforming. So that's probably why he's not asking to legalize the basement, he's asking to legalize the upstairs bedrooms, which.
Victoria, my question remains, and I don't have an answer yet.
What?
What was your question again?
Who allowed, by what action?
Dennis Kirkpatrick, your past building inspector.
That should be verified in the, in your file.
Your building inspector.
It allowed it to become five bedrooms to begin with.
Right.
Well, Dennis Kirkpatrick allowed him to remove the two doors and put the one in the basement by saying, that was your building inspector then. By, by doing that, he said, you know, he's allowed to stay five bedrooms. But that's a tricky thing, since you see the layout of the building, it's still two bedrooms upstairs whether there's doors on or not.
It just says, "Removal of two doors and partition to create one bedroom." There's nothing here that says he's allowed to put a basement in.
Yeah, another one, there is. There was another permit for the basement. It's a whole, this is a weird one, because it said this was done, here it is, "Removal of two bedrooms, partition to create one bedroom," then it was, where's the other permit? That's the upper level, I just had it.
I don't have it, but mine has it.
Yeah, this is, I just saw it here.
No, I understand.
This may not be the only file to. This may not be the only file. And he did install a dormer. And he did install a dormer in nineteen eighty-nine.
So where is the dormer?
In four.
I think it's the bathroom.
It's why?
I think it's the bathroom.
Does he have a permit for the bathroom?
Yeah, this was done in nineteen eighty-nine.
Well, the, I mean, the idea is that, let's say that some.
So, but that doesn't change the headspace or the basement?
If someone came and stopped both of our families, but you feel that you are, you have that.
Trying to find the level.
Mark, I have another question.
On this.
Building permits. The date has been changed from oh four to six. Who changed that?
No, I saw that in this one, too.
Victoria, okay. Victoria, with the date change here, it is not initial. It can change from oh four to oh six.
Looks like it was.
Which, which document?
My official was in oh four.
Village of New Ross Building Verdict, December thirteenth, two thousand four.
The expiration date was extended.
Oh, that's expiration, yeah, that's expiration.
Right, so that means he may not have been done with the work.
But the point is, it should be initial. You don't just change dates where they know it.
It may be helpful if we get copies of the building files for the next.
Well, my suggestion.
What?
Since the applicant's not here, I would just dismiss the application.
Come down this way.
He's not here, I would say, close the application.
That works for me, is it legal?
This is mine.
Yeah, that's great, so.
Yeah, he's not here. Is this somebody's?
He's here.
So we can have a hearing without him, if he doesn't show up.
No, that's true, that's true.
The information. So we can have.
Yeah, that might be better.
So, could I have a motion then to hear this?
Sure, it's a fair one.
At our November nineteenth meeting? To hear, that we would like to have a public hearing on ZBA fourteen fifteen at the November nineteenth. Are you doing a public hearing, or are you just doing a meeting with the applicant since the? Public hearing. No, we're going to a public hearing on advice of council.
So if we go to a public hearing, what are we, what are we acting on?
He's asking for a variance from the square footage department, because he doesn't have enough square feet for the bedrooms. He's asking for a variance from the square footage department, because he doesn't have enough square feet for the bedrooms.
So that's the only thing we're ruling.
That's the only issue, you'd either be approving or denying the variance request, which would allow him to have six bedrooms.
Okay, so I would like to request, unless this isn't useful, I would like to request that in preparation for that hearing, we find out from the building department files.
All the information.
I'm gonna have all the information.
What I want to know is, when he did the things that he did, like put a bedroom in the basement, was that allowed, was that allowable under code? So I want to know, you're saying that if the code in place at the time said he could do it, then we can't take it away from him. So I would like to know what the code and the building permits were that allowed that work to be done. Similarly, I would like to know what the code and the building permits were that allowed him to dormer for the bathroom, put a bathroom in, divide the upstairs space. I would like to know whether all of that was in order, and what the code said about headroom, and whether he's got headroom, does he really have? Because if the dormer is just for the bathroom, then that doesn't change.
It is, it is big spacing, you know that, it is big spacing up there. We, we'll have all the information for you for the public hearings.
And is there anything else of that sort that we want clarity on? Because I don't want to now compound something, if it turns out that the zoning was in place that precluded one of the things that somehow managed to go along, I don't want to compound that.
Right, well, so the only issue before you is whether you're gonna give him the sixth bedroom. If there was a mistake earlier on in giving him a fifth bedroom?
Right.
We're stuck with that now.
And he's also not asking us for that, so let us act on this application.
But, but all that information will be helpful in deciding whether or not to give him a sixth bedroom.
Okay, so for clarity's sake, I also just, would you just answer this as a set aside? Under what circumstances, if something is brought to us, like an extra bedroom, I don't care what it is. If something is brought to us, and in the research for determining whether we're gonna pass on that or not, it turns out that there are violations of current code that were also, would also be violated. My understanding was that once it's brought to us, if there's gonna be a change, then everything else needs to be brought into compliance if it's out of compliance.
Well, so there's, there's two different concepts, there's building code issues and there's zoning code issues. And so when you're looking at something, it may need to be brought into compliance with the zoning code, but building code may still be grandfathered. And so it's hard to answer that question without specifics. In this case, the request for the variance would not impact what he has already.
Even if what he has already was illegal when he got?
Yeah, if we find out there is something that's like code violation, whether existing or pre-existing, where he didn't get the approval, whatever the date was, yeah, then we deal with that violation.
Okay, okay.
Right.
So you're not excluding that, you're just saying it's not our business?
It's almost how we found this one.
Okay.
Right, and so, because you're not, he's the enforcement, he decides if it's a violation or not.
Okay.
So if he finds a violation, he can write it up.
Okay.
But you guys are tasked with only looking at the application report.
Thank you, okay, and we have a motion on the table, I believe. Do we have a second?
The motion was to do it at that next meeting?
The motion is to have a public hearing on ZBA 1415 on December 19th. At seven, December 19th, 2014?
When is said?
November, thank you, November 19th.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, November 19th.
Second.
At 7:00 PM, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the motion.
I'm abstaining.
Okay, and Joanna is an abstention, because she was out of the room. Joanna is abstaining on the motion, because she was not in there.
Rogan, will you contact the applicant and have them send out the notices?
Yes, yeah, yeah, definitely.
Okay, and so now, let me go back to the agenda. So now we should be moving.
Public hearings.
To public hearings.
Good night, Susan.
Good night, Victoria.
Be in touch.
All right, so the next item on the agenda, before us is a public hearing for ZBA 1411, a setback area variance for deck construction on an improved barn at 10 Works Avenue. Could I have a motion to open the public hearing for ZBA 1411?
So moved.
Second? Joanna, seconds, all in favor? Aye. Dan, would you care to come to the table, please?
This is the 10 Works Avenue one?
This is 10 Works Avenue, yes. So, is there anyone here in the public who wishes to speak to this particular application? Yes?
I would be very much in favor of this application, knowing the history and knowing what John did there. Knowing that all he did was create a, an architectural outlet to cover up the broken debris of an old foundation. Deck, that's there, really not a deck, it's so small, it's so narrow. I don't think that's the same application for partying, but a deck would normally have.
Okay, um, do you have any comments you'd like, wait, would anybody else like to speak to this issue? Okay, Dan, do you have anything else you'd like to add? Okay, um, so.
Are you asking your planner for a recommendation?
That is a good question.
She already gave one at the last meeting.
Yes.
But it needs to be written, they're like, it acted, it should be written.
Okay, in that case, it should be in the minutes that, that are in our, in your papers.
Oh, Bren, your hour, thank you. I will give it right there, we will read it into the notes.
Well, it should also be in everybody's papers.
Okay, that's not the point. The point is, this is the public hearing, the planner's recommendation needs to be recorded.
Okay, so, all right, we're just gonna read it into the record. So from Bren White, our planning board, our planning director, boards, this is an application for an area variance for a deck off the garage at 10 Works Avenue. The deck is one foot from the rear lot line, requiring a 24-foot variance from the required 25-foot rear yard setback. The angle of the rear property line puts the deck slightly closer to the rear lot line than the garage itself, which was pre-existing. It should be noted, this is an after-the-fact application. And a notice of determination from the building inspector, Richard Travis. A permit was issued by a previous building inspector for work to be performed on a garage barn to be converted to an office with a bath and kitchenette. During a final inspection, I observed that a deck was constructed on the south side of the structure. The deck does not match what was shown on the submitted and previously approved plan. Previously approved plan shows a set of steps on the south side of the structure, directly outside the exit door. After reviewing the zoning requirements for the parcel, I determined that a variance was required for the rear yard setback for the deck. The deck is currently one foot from the rear of the property line, according to the submitted plot plan. Rear yard setbacks are specified in Village Code 2012-13B, 8B, Subcode 2, to be 25 feet. A rear yard setback variance of 24 feet is required. So, return that, thank you. So, um, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So you have nothing else you want to do?
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Would anybody like to make a motion with respect to this request for a variance?
I'd like to make a motion to approve it.
I'm second.
Okay, is there any discussion on the matter? Okay, so, let's take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I would like to vote nay on this, and I would like to explain why. I would like to vote nay, because I am concerned about the number of after-the-fact requests that have been coming to us, and it's not so much an objection to this request as it is to the fact that this has to stop. People have to come to the zoning board of appeals and make their appeals in the proper manner. There are just too many of these that we've been having, and it should not be easier to ask forgiveness than permission. So, the motion has carried. Did you wanna say something?
I don't think I did vote.
Oh, you didn't vote? Are you abstaining?
I am abstaining, because I was not here at the last meeting, and I don't feel that I have, that I'm ready to make a decision, that I have a decision to make.
Okay, we still have three members, so it passes.
I'm gonna change the vote.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Okay, so, fourth item on the agenda is a ZBA application. Before us is a public hearing for ZBA 1412, a proposed variance to relocate a sign at 10A Church Street. And, this is the flower shop? This is the flower shop. So, may I have a motion to open a public hearing for ZBA 1412? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and, hello? Let's see, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to this matter? Okay, the planning director has provided a manual regarding this application, which reads, as requested, the applicant placed a cardboard mock-up in the proposed location of the flower shop. And Bren has provided us with a photo. The applicant is requesting that the sign be removed from the building and be placed almost directly below the existing sign on freestanding posts. Many buildings along this stretch of Church Street are built up to the sidewalk line. The shop on this parcel, however, sits back eight to 10, is it inches or feet?
Feet.
Which may make the business less obvious from the street. I was initially concerned that the proposed sign location might block the view of traffic, leaving the property directly north of the building. When the mock-up was in place, I evaluated the sign location from both a pedestrian and a vehicular point of view. From both perspectives, from the north, the proposed sign location did not impede my view of traffic on Church Street. The sign was, however, at least partially blocked by a vehicle parked in the lot adjacent to the building. So while I don't have a problem with the location of the proposed sign from an obstruction of view perspective, I'm not convinced that the sign will be any more visible in its proposed location. The planning board discussed this application at the October 7th, 2014, meeting, and made the following motion. Mr. Stephens, motion to recommend approval of ZBA 1412 to the ZBA. Mr. Zealer seconded, four ayes, zero nays, one absent, Ms. Harshaw, motion carries. Do you wanna make any comments regarding your application?
No, I think, other than I'm here to ask permission for this.
Thank you. I, I, you don't know how much I appreciate that.
So, no, I think the location, unfortunately, or fortunately, is the best that we have on the property. I feel that it improves the vision of the sign, quite honestly, because as you're traveling north on Church Street, where it currently exists is certainly out of sight until you're right on top of it. So that's really the whole motivation behind relocating it.
Okay.
Yeah, I never realized that there was a flower shop there until my wife said, "Let's go to the flower shop." I said, "What flower shop?"
Yeah.
All right.
Well, I walked by it several times, I live on Church Street, and I, you know, I do not see it. And I've driven down there also when it was there, and it did not impede the view of traffic, which was, I think, our concern. I have a question in regard to this photograph. In regard to the photograph, do I see a temporary sign out on the sidewalk?
It's, it's not on the sidewalk, oh. It looks like you see a, some kind of sign on the sidewalk.
And those things are not allowed in the village, are they?
That's true.
Commercial signs like this are not allowed in the village. So I'm hoping that won't be part of your advertising in the future. It is not, it is not uncommon for the village to be flooded with those signs, especially on weekends. But there, commercial signs like that are illegal. Could I also make just an impassioned plea to get the grass off the sidewalk? Because I think that, you know, in terms of the safety issue, in terms of people being able to drive down the street and actually notice your sign, if people are stepping off into the street, they're gonna be watching the people they're trying not to hit. So if you guys could just, you know, it's a nice sidewalk, otherwise.
Yeah, we intend to clean it up.
Thank you. Okay, so.
I would move to approve ZBA 1412.
And do I have a second?
You need to close your hearing.
Did we not close the hearing? Okay, thank you.
I make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
I will move to approve ZBA 1412.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You are approved. And thank you for coming, Chris. Before, for the batteries. Fifth item on the agenda is ZBA 1413, proposed front yard setback and side yard setback for 43 Central Street. Could I have a motion to discuss ZBA 1413?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Would you care to come to the table and join us? Okay, so, the building inspector provided a letter of determination regarding this application, which reads, after reviewing the proposed project, I have determined that a change of use to the existing garage from a utility art/work studio to a single-family detached dwelling is allowed. It is my determination that 21217C does not apply, since the building is existing and not being constructed as that section states. However, the building does not meet the required front yard or side yard setbacks. The planning director provided a letter of determination regarding this application, which reads, the applicant is requesting to convert his existing garage from a utility art studio to a single-family dwelling unit, requiring area variances for front and side yard setbacks. The existing garage is located at 13 feet 11 inches and 2 inches from the front and side property lines, and would require 10 feet 1 inches and 12 feet 4 inch variances respectively. Relevantly, the garage is also located just a few feet away from the neighboring house to the east. While I can sympathize with the applicant's desire to generate more income, I would be leery to grant a variance for a residence so close to a neighboring house. Based on Village Code, the intent in this district is that homes be located 25 feet apart. Village Code 21217C permits only one primary, one or two-family structure be constructed per parcel in all residential districts. While this code does specify that applicable buildings be proposed to be constructed, and thus do not apply, in this case, to an existing garage, it seems obvious the intent of this ordinance, that only one residential structure be allowed per building lot. The planning board discussed this application on October 7th and made the following motion. Mr. Stephens' motion to make a negative recommendation, to make no recommendation on, wait, hold on. To make a negative recommendation.
I think that to make no recommendation should be scratched.
Thank you. So let me try it again. Mr. Stephens' motion to make a negative recommendation on the application for Mr. Butler's property on Center Street, but request. but requests that the ZBA consider whether it can be approved as an accessory apartment. Mr. Zeiler seconded, four ayes, zero nays, one absent, Ms. Harshaw, motion carries. The village liaison, Mr. Rocco, requested that the village planner presents findings to the village board regarding changing the accessory use component within the village code. After this process, Mr. Rocco requests a recommendation from the planning board." So, Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Would you care to comment on your application?
Surely. I started the project about two years ago, and as things have changed in my life, I've now kind of determined or wanted to have that, turn that workshop studio into a place where I could live part-time, spring, summer, and, um, basically keep it as an, and change it as, change it to an occupancy rather than a workshop studio. I was under the understanding that over .33 acres, I could have two dwellings on my lot. And I think the only variance is the setbacks. Again, the idea for me was just, as a 14 to 15-year resident in New Pulse, retired teacher, alls I wanted to, my objective here is to be able to stay in New Pulse part-time, keep my house, and the only way I can do that is to kind of generate some kind of more income, to take care of some of the tax burden.
Okay.
I have a question. Do you have, um, do you have a surveyed map of the property?
I have a survey from the county.
In other words, you know where the, you know where the points are of the lot, four points?
Um, I have a surveyed map from the, from the county.
And when was that survey done?
Uh, that I couldn't tell you.
That would be the tax map. He does not have a survey.
All right, a tax map is not a survey map. I would want to see a surveyed map before I was going to approve anything, because I went up there and looked at that, and boy, that's awfully close to the neighbor. And it seems like it's probably very close to the line and hopefully not over the line. And if you've never had it surveyed by a surveyor, then you don't know.
Don't know.
You don't know exactly what he says. What does this say here? It's two inches? If you don't know exactly where the line is, I mean, the building could actually be two inches over the line. You don't know where the, where the actual line is. Do you understand what I mean?
Yes.
And the other thing that bothers me is if you're going to make a residence out of it, if that place ever caught fire, boy, the building next door is gone. And I would want to see a fireproof wall.
Well, I would, I would certainly...
And if you've only got two inches, you can't put a fireproof wall.
Fireproof wall on the inside?
On the outside.
Well, there's certainly more than two inches.
Well, yeah, but you don't know that because you don't have a real survey.
That's what I've been told. I mean, the application, the...
The house is, is, the neighboring house is probably six foot away. I mean, close.
When did you convert the garage into the studio? That was fairly recently.
Uh, 2012, I started.
2012?
June 20, yeah, June, June 2012.
Have you looked at the file?
So, this is the file here. Mark?
The entire building department filed it.
I have a question about the parking. You have now two dwellings on the property. You need six parking spaces for that. Where are the six parking spaces?
Why would I need six parking spaces?
Because Schedule E of the village code requires that.
For a two-bedroom?
Well, you have two separate dwellings, and you need to have three places for each dwelling up to three bedrooms, and then one after each, one, what is it? One space for each bedroom there.
The house there is 950 square foot feet. It's one bedroom, the original.
Right, but you are right now not asking us for a variance for parking, so...
No, I'm not. I'm explaining to you the size of the house.
Right, but the, I am curious to know, you know, when we're talking about the dimensions of the lot, where the six parking spaces are? Because if you don't have a variance request for them, then you must have space for them.
The code requires two.
I think it's two separate dwellings, the way I see it.
Two spaces per dwelling unit containing a maximum of three bedrooms.
Okay, so then he needs four spaces.
Uh, two, I think. Yeah, two per dwelling unit.
Two per dwelling unit, you have two parking units.
I was still not clear about the studio. Is the studio fitted out for occupancy? Is it, does it have a kitchen or kitchenette? So it has a sink and a toilet? What is it?
It has a toilet and a sink.
A toilet and a sink? Because I'm not clear about, my understanding is that there can only be one primary residence on the part, on the lot, that that isn't a size restriction, that that's a zoning restriction.
Yeah, that's what the code, I think, just put in place last year.
So if that's the case, then the house is the house, and the garage turned into a studio can only be a studio.
It would require another variance?
If you turn it to, when you say studio, you turn it to a studio apartment?
No, I'm talking about art studio. I'm talking about non-hack.
Yeah, that'd be accessory. It's not, that was accessory. You only got one principal permit.
Right. But there's an accessory, so you're saying this could be called an accessory apartment?
No, it has right now, is the accessory building. He's trying to turn accessory into dwelling.
Okay, so, but where in the code would that even be allowed in the first place? Regardless of the setbacks?
You know, that zone, I think last year he put the new code in which says you got, you only got one accessory use, so he would need a variance.
I'm sorry, he would need a variance.
That's sort of the conversation that the ZBA could be having tonight, because Rich, our other building inspector, thought that it was allowed, a second dwelling unit was allowed because it already existing, the garage already exists. I disagree with him and say it's not allowed. So that's a good opportunity for the ZBA to say which they think is allowed or not allowed.
Okay.
Rich has got a good question.
This is in a hearing. Wait, this is in a hearing. Let's, if we could just stick with the board coming up with issues first. That can happen at a public hearing. Yeah, I'm, I guess one of the things we're not clear about, I look at this and according to the definition of dwelling in the code, I think we have two dwellings. And when I look at Schedule E, it says detached, single-family, and two-family structures, three spaces per dwelling unit. So you're back to the parking? I'm back to the parking. Containing a maximum of three bedrooms, not a minimum, but a maximum, plus one space for each additional bedroom unit. But that also hinges on, are we talking about this, is this two dwellings? Is what you are proposing two dwellings?
Can I ask, just to clarify what the use is going to be? Are you proposing that you are going to rent out the primary residence on the property, and then you're going to reside in the studio when you're in New Pulse? So then I would say that it's two different residences if you've got one being rented out to a completely separate...
Yeah.
And although you will not plan to be in residence all the time, the fact that it becomes a dwelling unit opens up that possibility.
Yes.
And the area variance is significant.
Yes. And, I mean, the other thing, while you are living there, I'm sure you are quiet and a very good neighbor, but we are all mortal, and at some point we leave our houses and go on to other places, and somebody else buys the property, and that could be rented out to students who like to drum or something, and, you know, they're two inches away from the neighbor's property.
So you were asking for a special comment for a limited time of some kind, for only your life?
I'm not suggesting anything.
Or just owner occupancy, or...
I don't know that that's something we can do. I mean, one of the questions that, there are several questions we have to consider. One is whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. So that is a concern, I think.
You would degraze that, too.
Yes.
That was what Dave was raising.
Yes.
Let me, let me ask, what variance did he need, is it the building inspector, in 2012, to change the garage to a studio? Did you get a building permit for that?
I did.
And the, and the building permit is, says...
The building permit said what?
The building permits what?
It permits changing the garage into a workshop, workshop studio.
Okay, to change.
Workshop studio, but not a living space.
Correct.
But meanwhile, is the main house, are you living in the main house?
No.
So the main house is being rented?
Correct.
The main house only has one bedroom?
One bedroom.
So, is this property required to be registered? Is it registered?
It must be if it's, don't you inspect it?
I doubt that's how this was registered. I don't know, I don't know off the top of my head which was registered. We're actually just updating registration by staff.
Is owner occupied? Are you living there too?
No, he's not, no. It's not owner, it's a rental. Right, yeah. So, um...
So by, but by, even if, okay, I guess what I'm asking is what takes precedence? The zoning, it seems to me, says there can only be one residence on that piece of property. If that's true, then none of the, none of the other issues apply, except of course if it's going to be rented, then it needs to be registered, that stuff. If there can be two residences on the property, then at the least, besides the setbacks and stuff, so if, notice, then we still have to determine whether we could even grant that because where would the parking be? So there's a driveway, as you're facing the house, there's a driveway on the left of the house.
Yeah.
And then there's the house, and then there's the garage, really, pretty much to the sidewalk. There's not much space between the garage and the sidewalk.
Oh, about eight feet.
Between the garage and the sidewalk, or between the garage and the street? The sidewalk.
No, we, we, no, it's just because it says it here.
Eight feet.
No, it's, I think you, all right.
From the garage to the sidewalk?
From the garage to the sidewalk.
About eight feet.
I see, I'm, I think that it was...
What's a setback supposed to be in the front?
Yeah, it would, all right, so the garage is located...
Twenty-five feet.
Yeah, at 13 feet 11 inches, um, from the front, and would require a 10-foot 1-inch variance. So your, your, your setback there is 13 feet 11 inches between the edge of the garage and the start of the street.
Start of the street or the start of the sidewalk, which is the requirement? Is the setback to the street or to the sidewalk?
The street.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because the sidewalk goes in the street. Okay, um, yeah, so in terms of, you know, is the variance substantial on the setbacks? Yes, it is. Your question of whether, I mean, it's, we're discussing... Yeah, we're not being asked for a variance to allow a second principal use on the property. So it seems like, um...
We should maybe address these variants.
Yeah, we need a few more variance requests.
I was just going to say, yeah. Area won't do it, really.
Well, we can't address the area variance until we've addressed the use variance.
Which, we're not being asked for it.
Right. We need to address the use before we can address the area.
No, it's not a use, it's also an area variance, but it's putting...
But we need the use before we can address the area, right?
Yeah, that's what I understand if it's going from a studio to a dwelling, that's a use issue.
That is a use issue.
And frankly, based on the area issues alone, I would be inclined to vote against it.
You're not going for a use variance?
Well, we're wondering why not.
You're going to change the use of the building, that's not a use variance. Because the use, what he's trying to do isn't allowed in that district. The use variance for something is not allowed.
But the use may not?
Like, if you're trying to do something that's not allowed in the zoning regulations, that's a use variance. Everything you're doing, even if you're trying to...
A change of use.
The change of use he's trying to do is allowed if he gets certain variances.
Right. And I'm saying based on the area variance.
So the area variance and some zoning variance, like the maximum on the lots, principal permitted lots, that'd be a variance, you know, type of... But that's where, I guess we were talking about, we were saying before, where this is an opportunity for the board to kind of give us interpretation of this code too, because Rich was saying that that one doesn't apply because the building's already constructed. The way it's written, it says you can't construct the building, you can't construct a new building. But does this change of use, changes from, you know, a shop to a dwelling? Does that here might construct, consider new construction use? So you'd have to determine that, if you require a variance or not.
May I ask a question? Revert, change the order of the question. For us to think cogently about any of the issues that are being raised, it would seem to me that the first question that needs to be raised is whether by zoning, this can even exist as a habitable space? Because if it can't, then the setbacks don't apply anymore, nothing matters.
You'd have to decide whether, whether interpretation of that code applies in the same... Because the way the code's written says, whenever a single-family or two-family dwelling is proposed to be constructed, is it proposed to be constructed? So you have to decide is this, is this a construction? You're liable to...
Did they?
...it applies, so, rather than one principal permit, you shall be struck. So if the building is pre-existing, you're saying a conversion of a shop to a dwelling is a constitute construction? If you say it constitutes a construction, you need a variance for that code.
But if, but if there can only be one dwelling on that piece of property, then what am I missing? By definition, it can't, it doesn't matter what...
No, this is, this is what Rich, why Rich is saying it doesn't need that variance, because he's saying it's proposed to be constructed. When you consider it to be constructed, building being constructed, or just alterations is considered construction.
Mark, what did the 2012 file permit?
Uh, he had a conversion from home to garage. It was still storage, he was just changing the storage to a studio storage. He wasn't using it for the residential use.
No, he did a lot, a lot of change.
Oh, yeah, you're allowed to do the changes too. As long as your uses are similar, like say if you're going to go from a garage to a workshop, whether you want to call, I think people get confused with what studio, whether you think studio apartment. Studio is still a workshop. Studio apartment's still different. He has not converted into residential use right now. He is not residential used. So he converted it from a shop, or from a garage to a shop. Now he wants to apply to convert it from a shop. So he hasn't, he hasn't done anything beforehand, like somebody like Casey. He's seeking permission first.
Why did the planning board not make a recommendation?
Might I have looked at it?
He did. He did.
They made no recommendation.
Yes.
No, I mean, they made both recommendations.
They said.
That's not true, we made no.
According to this.
Katie Silver just read it.
That they made no recommendation on.
No, they made a negative recommendation on the application.
Okay, so they're, they motioned to make a negative recommendation.
But that it can be.
Okay, on the application.
But that it could be, considered whether it be approved as an accessory apartment.
Can be approved as an accessory apartment, so that is.
No, my accessory apartment.
Conflicting, it's a conflicting recommendation.
No, my accessory apartment.
That's your recommendation, it's not. I'm not permitted to speak.
Okay, let's, yeah.
How do we determine whether there can be two residences on that property?
Well, alright, in terms of the accessory, you know, let's just look at that accessory issue for a moment. If we were to want to look at that as an accessory structure. The detached accessory building, the first thing it says is no accessory building shall be located closer to the street than the street wall of the principal building. So that does not apply, I mean, that's, that's a condition that does not.
That would be a variance.
That's why I'm applying for a.
Well, but that's not being requested here. Two, no building shall be located, okay. No accessory building shall be located closer to the side and rear lot lines than a twelve-foot feet or a distance equivalent to the height of the accessory building, whichever is greater.
Is this pertaining to existing structures?
No, this is if it were to become an accessory structure. Right now, you have two principal dwellings.
No, no, no. If it's an accessory structure, he's applying.
He's, okay.
To convert it to another principal building.
So what did they recommend we do as an accessory apartment?
Yeah, they're not recommending as a principal, as a second principal.
So.
The ZBA consider whether it can be approved as an accessory apartment, not as a secondary.
Dwelling.
Dwelling.
The problem is the word accessory apartment does not exist on that computer.
Thank you.
Because I tried to tell you before.
Okay.
That you have, you have to look in a different section of the code.
The appropriate section of the code is two.
If that garage had been attached to the house.
Be a different story.
Under the house, you could approve this.
Okay, what section am I looking at?
212-41H.
212, hold on just a second. 212, 4, 1H. 212. Wait, I'm in, wait, I can't dig it out of four, 212-4?
41. 41.
212-41.
Oh, 41, I thought, okay.
No, I'm sorry, not 41, 212-41.
212, there we go, 41H, thank you. Especially as we're not needed by a total of seven families, one per each unit. One additional unit, dwelling unit is a legal residence, again, the last size is okay. Okay, I see where you guys are coming from.
But where, we're not being, yes, where is the use, where is the word accessory in the application?
It isn't here.
It isn't.
No, we are being asked about. The.
Setbacks.
Yeah, we are being asked for two setbacks. And in terms of percentage, one is at about fifty percent, one is about ninety-something percent.
Ninety-nine.
Is this, yeah. What impacts will it have on the neighborhood? I'm still concerned about parking. And is it a self-created hardship? Absolutely.
I think it.
I'm sorry?
I, I would suggest it would, it would be a, a much more of a fire hazard as, 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 as a garage in, in past years than with gasoline in it, et cetera, than it, than it does now.
Yeah, that's a good point. That's a good point.
To be, to be truthful, I mean, it was a, you know, a wooden shell.
Do you have heat in it now?
I do.
And what's the heat, heating system?
Well, Katie, where are we at this point?
Yeah, I have discussed it and I think we need to.
A public hearing.
I think I would want to do a public hearing in November on this.
Okay, and so that would be on our?
November 19th.
November 19th, Wednesday, November 19th, so is there a second on that?
I have a question.
Yes.
You have to wait till the second.
Just wait for the second, then we have a discussion. Second, I second it.
Yeah.
So what is the public hearing on?
The public hearing is on this application, at which point we will hear from the public, we will review the, you know.
If my neighbors want to come.
But, no, I understand that, but, so that means that if neighbors come and say they have no objection to the setback, then we're granting the setback variance is on something that we're, well, even if we said we didn't, we don't, I know we don't argue.
We're fifty.
But let's say that there was no objection or no neighbors came, then whatever action we took on the setback, still presumed that we've accepted the idea that there can be a second residence on the property. And I have at least as much concern about that as I do about the setbacks.
I think, I think the issue we have here, however, is we are being asked for two variances. We can't throw in a couple other variances.
Actually, in this case, you do want to throw in the principal permitted use, principal permitted building issue because you have a building inspector and a planner that disagree with each other. And we need you to decide what you think. Is the second building allowed or does he need an additional variance for that second building?
Because if we decide that the, that there is only one residence on the property, then the application becomes moot and we don't have to have a public hearing because we can't grant.
I mean, that's, that's.
And our office.
Yeah, that's a code you're looking for, but it's, it's the word constructed, it screws, but it's got Rich. Not sure, does this, does this apply because it's already constructed? Does a conversion, you know, constitute construction?
And that's a discussion we have tonight.
So that's the interpretation, yeah, that's the interpretation you could do during a public hearing. We're going to do that, so we do your interpretation, and then, well, basically interpretation, you could approve or disapprove.
Okay, well, alright, let me ask the board, is this something we feel we can discuss tonight? Do we want to seek counsel on this?
I think that would be a good idea, to have our attorney give us some wisdom on it. But we have to have a public, excuse me, public hearing in the next month regardless of.
Yes.
What we feel that we would vote tonight.
Yes.
Because we have to be open to comments from the public.
Yes.
So as a result of all this, all these words, I think we should have our attorney here.
Okay, and I'm sorry to send her away. So is it the pleasure of the board that I should seek a, an opinion from our attorney as to how we should interpret the issue of, what the word.
We've got a motion, we've got a motion on the floor as to whether we're going to have a public hearing, and I call the question.
Okay, so let us first vote on the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion has passed.
I'm still, I'm sorry, I don't, I'm still confused. So I'm looking at Rich's thing.
Yes.
And yours, and what I'm hearing us say is that if Rich is right, that because this isn't being a newly built building, it therefore means that there could be two primary residences on the property.
That's for you guys to determine.
No, I'm.
No, that's what I'm saying, that's what we're questioning.
I'm asking what, but I mean.
Well, that's what we're questioning, how do you see that? Give us, give us interpretation of that code, whether you think that's right or not.
But if, if we see it the way that he is seeing it and the way that he put here, then what that implies is that there can be two.
Yeah, if your interpretation would be determination, which would be the same things as variance, so either way, their decision.
Well, I'd, I'd like to look into that.
Yeah, that's a huge.
That's what I'm saying, that's what we're asking you to do.
You as the building inspector should know the difference between something being constructed or not constructed.
Rich, the determination is.
And, alright, let's take an example, two bedrooms.
That's why I agree that if.
Yeah, I think we need to.
I don't think an attorney can answer that, I think you all have to discuss.
Alteration is, alteration is construction. Richmond's building being there is construction. So I guess you're doing.
The building is already there, it's not being constructed.
It's being constructed inside.
I think we should.
It's like saying.
Well, yeah, but that's a different.
I, I think this should, this, the rest of this discussion should be held for the public hearing so we can move on the rest of our agenda, the secret.
I agree.
But I would, I would like you to get a.
Survey.
When, when you bought, how long ago did you buy the property?
Fifteen years ago, perhaps.
When you bought the property, you didn't have it surveyed?
Uh, I might have had it surveyed.
Well, why don't you see if you can find us a survey map that you have? I mean, I, I can't, I really can't understand buying a piece of property without having it surveyed. Did you have a mortgage from the bank or did you buy it for cash? You remember?
I'm not going to even answer that.
If, if, if you bought it.
Yeah, boy, I bought it for cash.
Alright, if you bought it from the bank, you had to have a survey.
So I had a survey, okay, I'll, I'll get you a survey.
Okay.
I mean, what else can I tell you? I told you three different ways. What, what would you like me to tell you?
Okay, we.
I'd just like to see a survey.
Let's, let's move on.
I understand.
I'm trying to get to.
I think I might have a survey when I bought the house, fifteen years ago.
Okay, so, um, we have.
I don't, I, I looked for a survey, that's why I went to Kingston, because Rich told me to get a survey. I went there to get that survey.
Okay, so Mr. Butler.
Yes.
You understand we're going to have the meeting on the November 19th at 7:00 PM? And you need to notify neighbors. Do you know about the requirements for doing this?
I think two hundred square, two hundred feet.
I, I made the list, so I'll be in touch with you.
Yeah.
Try to distribute it.
Yeah, so just so you know that this, that has to happen before the public hearing.
How far in advance?
Ten days.
Okay, so thank you very much, and let's move on to the next item on the agenda, which is ZBA 1414, proposed sign variance for 83 North Chestnut. Could I have a motion to discuss ZBA 1414?
No moves.
All in favor? Aye.
Oh, can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so. The building inspector provided a letter of determination regarding this application, which reads, after reviewing the proposed freestanding sign, this department has come to the following determinations. The sign is proposed to be placed five feet from the edge of the road. There is no sidewalk in front of 8183 North Chestnut. A commercial property shall be expected, three signs with an aggregate sign area to be equal to thirty square feet plus twenty-five percent of the road frontage as measured in feet of the lot upon which the sign is to be erected, but shall not exceed a hundred square feet. No one sign face shall exceed thirty-three and a third square feet. There shall be no exceptions for quarter lots. A property with more than one business shall not exceed an aggregate of one hundred square feet of total sign coverage. Signs may be wall, projecting, window, permanent, or freestanding signs. The following signs are permitted and count towards the total allowable signage. Wall signs with or without border shall not exceed thirty-three and a third feet. Projecting signs may project a maximum of six feet from the building, minimum clearance from the ground of eight feet, maximum clearance of twelve feet above the ground, or not to exceed the highest point of the building, whichever is more restrictive. Freestanding signs shall be set back a minimum of five feet from the inside edge of the sidewalk or a minimum of fifteen feet from the curb or edge of the road if there is no sidewalk. Maximum height to the top of the sign shall not exceed twelve feet above the ground or the highest point of the building, whichever is more restrictive. No property shall have more than one freestanding sign. Permanent window signs as large as twenty percent of the total window area of the principal facade, lettering up to twelve inches high. The planning director provided a letter of determination regarding this application, which reads, the applicant is requesting for a five-foot-six-inch by five-foot-six-inch sign to be located five feet from the street, encroaching into the required fifteen-foot front yard setback. My main concern here is that the sidewalk ends at the parcel adjacent to the south, leaving the grassy area next to the curb for pedestrians to walk. By locating the sign in this grassy area, pedestrians would be required to either walk in the parking lot where cars are designated to be, or walk in the road. Either option is not ideal. The planning board discussed this application October 7th and made the following motion. Two motions were made for this application, one to positively recommend this application and one to negatively recommend this application. Both motions failed, so no recommendation by the planning board was made. So do you have any comments regarding your application?
Yes, so, sorry, basically, the premise of the entire variance was to place the sign exactly where the pre-existing sign was. It was constructed in 2000, I believe, and I have, I apologize, I only have two copies, but these are everything from recent sign permit application that I just gave, which I believe you have almost all of this. But I also have a sign permit that was issued for me on September 16th of 2013, as well as a certificate of compliance. Now, this was, I believe, just an error among me. I originally did not put actual measurements on my original, so you guys know this. I did not put original measurements on, and it was approved. Since, right afterwards, after it was approved, purchased the sign, so I have a receipt for the sign. So there's two in a row. I also recently, so excuse me, right after I received the approval, I didn't purchase the sign for close to $1,200, $1,132, with just awaiting to put it back up again. So that's, sorry, I apologize, I'm trying to figure out what it is. Basically, I'm just looking to place it in the exact same spot. I also have a picture, I apologize, I'm looking at this picture, but this is of the older sign that was there.
We know the oldest.
Okay, it was placed there, yes, exactly.
Yeah, that's it.
So basically, I'm just looking to replace the sign as is. Every other aspect of the code is absolutely correct. I called a number of times, made sure everything was correct. I do have another copy too, if you need to see.
Well, we can just pass it.
Okay, I apologize. So basically, I'm just looking to place the sign, I don't want to cause any problems with it. You know, I would have applied for this a year ago had I not known.
But let me ask you a question. You know, when you look at 32 North, there is a sidewalk on the west side of 32 going from, oh, you know, just practically from the, the FFW all the way past that property, and there just are three properties that don't have a sidewalk. And I think sidewalks are really important. You know, you do have an obligation in the code to clear a place from snow, even if the sidewalk is not there so people can walk. If we asked you to put it, say, seven and a half feet back, would that be a problem?
My only problem is, again, I don't own the property, and Anthony, presumably my landlord, wanted to come tonight, he couldn't make it, he didn't write a letter on my behalf. Just seeing the picture here, it would put it into one of the parking spots, which then we would lose another parking spot, and I mean, the nature of my business is a physical therapist. there are not a lot of parking spots to begin with, we have four designated. A lot of people can't walk very far, so I just worry about, plus, you know, taking that spot away from the pizza place that's already there.
Well, Katie, you don't think there's enough room for a sidewalk? Who puts the sidewalk in?
Well, the village would probably have to get a grant. The thing is, I went and I walked there, I really walked around, and if you, I mean, sidewalks in New Paltz are five and a half feet wide. And if we approve a sign to be in that place, we're precluding the possibility of having a sidewalk. And I think sidewalks are important, I don't know why those properties escaped having sidewalks. I think it's a shame, because that's such a pedestrian corridor otherwise. And so there's a, I mean, I understand your concern about going two and a half feet into a parking space. And yet, you know, there is a, a public interest to have the ability to have a sidewalk. If we grant you this permit, you know, it's a variance that goes with the property. Whatever happens there, we're precluding a sidewalk.
Well, if there was a sign already there, then this had been, had been approved already then, correct?
And it tied there are other variances with this angle that I approved this. Those are from, I believe, December twenty-first, two thousand five as well. And I have the minutes from that meeting as well.
Yeah, but just because it's not there now, if it was approved before, why wouldn't it be approved now?
Right, if a previous evening said that that's...
Verizon took its sign down.
Well, um, let me just find when the sign was updated.
I thought I did everything I was supposed to, I'd find this out.
Do you guys know off the top of your head the number for the sign part of the zoning code?
I didn't make it.
Is it, is it, wait, is it on the app, is it on the application as part of the...
Thank you, yeah, that's it.
It was right on the application.
What the code, what the...
Two twelve twenty-five.
Two twelve, twenty-five, okay, thank you. Let me just see when that was updated.
You mean what it's supposed to be?
But really, application, this is an old application, I knew applications would have required that information.
Why do you feel that it's necessary to have a sign, if there's a sign on your building?
Yes, and I actually have a number of patients who say they go by, the worst setback is kind of behind the other place, and they say they just don't see it. You know, we recently moved about a year ago, we, obviously, we still have people who go to the old building, we try to do everything we can, I don't advertise, the sign is really all I have to tell people to come there.
Well, just tell people to come behind, behind Village Pizza, that's a big enough landmark. But that's a terrible place for a sign because of what the snowplows will do to your sign.
Oh, I, I... Vicky, I didn't hear what you said.
It's a terrible place for a sign because of what the snowplows will do to the sign. We have problems throughout the community with snowplows and signs that are so close to where plowing happens.
Are you talking about the, the road, snowplows, or the plows that plow this driveway?
Whoever, yeah.
Well, I think the state is on risk, I mean, who wants to go to the sign?
There would be no problem with the state that plows Route thirty-two, because it's far enough back.
And the person who plows ours, I'm familiar with the gnome, and I've had no problem asking him. He puts all the snow behind the building, off to the side, behind the dumpster. Because I have to move some signs to allow him to do that anyway, freestanding.
So there's no way you could put a sign on your building, or put larger street, the street numbers on your building that would do it for your client though?
We just purchased the last sign, and the sign that's on the building is, I believe, the maximum that you can have on the building. So, that's what I said, I just called ahead, tried to find out what we could do. I gave, I believe it was about six inches to a foot less than the maximum, just to be sure, and, so...
I understand, I understand this predicament with the, with the sign, because I didn't, I still thought it was the Verizon place. When I went, when I went looking for it, I says, "Where the devil is this, anyway?", and then I, you know, drove down there and I saw it.
Um, yeah, you understand the argument about sidewalks, though?
Oh, I absolutely do, yes ma'am.
I mean, you know, one of the things we're, we're supposed to ask you is, what, what alternatives have you considered so that you wouldn't need to have a sign? Now, one, a variance, excuse me. One of the things I noticed about that property is it is about five feet farther back than most of the properties on thirty-two.
Yes.
So, the notion of fifteen feet, I think, you know, I don't feel that, I think there's a sort of a, non-self-created hardship because of that. But I would not want to give away what is traditionally a public space where sidewalks could be put. So, I would feel more comfortable if you were asking us for seven and a half feet, because then they could clearly put in a sidewalk and not have people banging into the sign if they're walking down the sidewalk. Because we're not giving it to just you, we're giving it to you and everybody else who comes after you.
But in that case, it wasn't given to, the Verizon had secured the variance, and it's not being given to me.
Well, because they took it out.
Is there a way for us to, I mean, we don't, are there sidewalks planned? Do we know whether there are sidewalks planned for this?
No, there are not sidewalks planned for this, but...
So my question then is, are we able to grant a temporary variance so that he could put the, let me just finish my question, so I don't keep wanting to dance.
Yeah, of course.
So that he could put his sign there, if the time comes when we're gonna put sidewalks, by then, the people would be familiar with where he was. My concern, and I don't want to give up sidewalks, I couldn't agree more strongly. I don't want to, and I hate the fact that the buildings are in the back instead of in the front, blah, blah, blah. But, my concern is that coming down thirty-two, if you're really busy looking for where you're trying to get to, and I know the pizza place is there, I understand, that's very, I know how frustrating it is when you can't find what you're looking for, and it's, I mean, this is a tasteful sign, it's not a humongous sign, but I also, with you, don't want to give up sidewalks. So if there was a way to say that this variance is in place until such time as the village determines that they're gonna put in sidewalks, and that that's agreed to under the terms of the variance, would that be so terrible?
You can do that.
Huh?
You can do it, it's a contingency.
Okay.
So the county recommended it, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, what?
That's what the county recommended.
That's what the county recommended, it was temporary, I missed that.
Oh, okay.
Well, you don't know if you're gonna be there forever.
I don't know, but I hope to be.
Unless Tony raises the red button.
I wouldn't label it temporary, because I've seen that problem with towns, how long is temporary? You want to do contingent upon...
Contingent upon building a sidewalk.
And then my question then would be, if that were the case, then, again, I don't own the property, then it would be, I then have to apply again for a seven and a half foot variance, try to get into there? Or how does that work?
It would push it that far enough to put a sidewalk, you would have to be...
Okay.
Because the variance is up to five feet, so you go seven, ten, as far as...
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, and then my, my other concern is, I was trying, you know, as I walked along, I actually walked along in the evening, and this one-way sign, who gets to put that sign up in the first place? Because you kind of start pushing people out into the street as you're walking along there, which is the other reason I wanted the seven and a half feet, because this sign, when you're looking at it here, it looks like, oh, no problem, you just kind of walk around. But when I'm walking there at night and trying to imagine something beginning about there, it's kind of tight, and so you want to step around on the other side. So, I mean, that would just be my concern, is I want there to be a possibility of pedestrian traffic that's safe.
Well, why don't we think about these issues and plan for public hearing?
Okay, may I ask a good question?
And have a more discussion later.
Why can't you handle this the same way you did North Front Street on a pole?
Sally, I need a word.
This sign is on two posts.
Yeah.
Why not a pole with a hanging sign?
Well, because it's still, it's still taking up the same amount of space.
No, it doesn't.
Because it does take up five to six inches. It takes up five feet, six inches whether you put it on a pole, unless you put it up seven feet high.
This was sometimes granted as a permit to me, and a lot of people...
Okay.
Nine feet?
Okay, so it's a, a non-self-created...
We didn't notice the problem at all.
Okay, well, why don't we move on with the agenda by... Okay, so do I have a motion? Uh, yes, I would like to move that we stop the discussion at this point and reconvene after a public hearing on the November nineteenth.
Is November nineteenth okay for you, or do you want the December one?
No, as soon as possible.
Okay. So, is there a second? All in favor?
Alright.
Okay, the motion has passed, we will see you...
Seven p.m.?
Seven p.m., November...
And as far as the, what requirements are before the public hearing, I believe you said you would...
Yeah.
Okay, I have absolutely no idea what needs to be done for that.
He said it doesn't help that place, he would have to get a new sign everywhere, because his sign can't be put on a pole.
His sign can't be put on a pole, why not? Because they...
Actually, that's just what the sign company told me.
He's already spent twelve hundred bucks.
Originally, there was a, there was the post that was there, which you'll see in the picture. I asked if I could just place a sign on top of that, and they said, "No, it would be a whole different sign, different than what I ordered after we do it."
Pole signs generally are not recommended aesthetically.
No, they're not as stable, and you'd have to have a way up to...
And they're just like...
I might worry about that also, but you'd have to have a way up there.
Well, the real question becomes, why was the sidewalk not required to begin with?
Okay, but the horse is out of the ark.
Yeah, we can't do that, thank you very much, let us move on.
Let's move on.
Let's move on to ZBA fourteen seventeen print A, requesting a fifteen-foot front yard setback variance, and ZBA fourteen seventeen print B, requesting a seven-foot side yard setback variance, both for twenty-six Cooper Street. May I have a motion to discuss ZBA fourteen seventeen?
Second.
All in favor, aye. Which I'd like to come to the table. Thank you. The planning director provided a letter of determination regarding this application, which reads, "The applicant is requesting front yard and side yard area variances for fifteen feet and seven feet respectively to place a zero net energy home closer to the lot line than is allowed by Village Code in this, the R-one zone. It appears that the granting of the proposed variances would have no negative impact on the neighborhood. It should be noted that I have discussed with the village board and planning board the appropriateness of the R-one zone. In my evaluation of the entire district, there are no homes that comply with the front yard setback of fifty feet. The boards are now considering the impacts of amending the R-one zone to reflect more appropriate setbacks for a village setting. The planning board discussed R-one rezoning on October seventh, two thousand fourteen, and made a motion which reads, Chairman Whitman, Chairman Whitman moved to recommend to the village board that the front yard setback for the R-one district be adjusted to twenty-five feet. Mr. Stephens seconded, four ayes, zero nays, one absent, Miss Herschel, motion carries. Would you like to comment on your, on your application?
Sure. Given that, it seems that the front yard fifteen-foot variance request is grantable without significant difficulty. So I would go mostly to the side yard, and explain why we're requesting side yard variance on one side. And some of it is because, if you look at the site plan that I gave you, these, this lot, as well as the adjacent one, they're, they're particularly narrow, given the orientations that we need for the solar panels on the roof. And, and even without that, truly, because the way any house would typically be facing the street, which these happen to be, it's very narrow. So, with all of these, we have tried to put the garage to the side, be setback behind, as most people prefer them, that the garage is not the front and center characteristic of the building. With this house, we're unable to, because there isn't enough room to get a reasonably sized house and say, a driveway around the back, the grade is also challenging on these, so it isn't feasible. We have to have the garage in the front, in front of the house. We're trying to make it as good as possible, given this restriction on this particular site. And so, the seven foot would allow us, and then that, you can kind of see the two front elevations that I'm giving. It would basically decompress the house a little bit, it would allow it to look a little more graceful. This, the requested variance is less than what would have been allowed in the R-two zoning district, which is not, and it's only on one side. So, we believe that it is reasonable, that it is the minimum to achieve the goal that we believe is a community benefit, as well as a benefit to the homeowner. And that's most of, most of it.
Okay, does anyone have any questions or comments?
So it's currently an empty lot?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to...
Okay, so, do you prefer November or December?
November, please, because you'll try to get winter right, you'll dig quick. After, in the hopes of...
They were hoping they'd have a start date of the fifteenth.
Okay, well, I'm sorry.
Couple days. And not your fault.
Yeah, okay, so, could I have a motion for a public hearing?
No, move. Seconded.
Okay, for ZBA fourteen seventeen, on Wednesday, November nineteenth, two thousand fourteen, at seven P.M. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And that's for both variances?
That is for both variances, yes, for seventeen A and B. Could I amend, would you amend your motion?
I think I would need, I think I would need that.
I didn't make any motion.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I mean, if I'm here, I amend it.
Okay, so, all in favor?
On a point of clarification, Madam Chair.
Yes.
The village board has not received any recommendations. There have been a discussion, there are no recommendations from the planning director or the planning board to change the lot size adjustments.
Okay.
And if it is desired, then a recommendation must come forth.
Okay.
Let's get on the stick there, fellow.
Well, both, the planner must make the recommendation to the board, and...
I have no issues with the lot sizes.
Okay. They were busy this, this month.
No, no, I'm just saying, this says that this is before the village board to change from fifty feet to twenty-five feet. There is nothing before the village board on this matter.
Yeah.
I didn't mean to say that, I meant that we have discussed it, and this is some of the research that I've done so far.
But a recommendation must be forthcoming.
Agreed.
Okay.
And we're certainly addressing that, it's R-one, right now, current parameters.
Yes.
Yes. May I make a, a urgent plea, if I can? Could we be one of the first, because we're so quick and easy? It's a funny way, you know, this is lovely to see you on action. Anyway, if you can, I understand that might not be possible.
Well, I also have a better suggestion, I think the village should open up a bar or eating like... I think it'd solve all your tax problems. So, like, you know, hearings, you could have it, and like, Brogan could have like...
Yeah, you'd have one of those little buzzer things.
Yeah, buzzer for when the motion is, you could have like a little sign up there.
Your tables ready?
Exactly, you know, and like, Brogan would be like, "What's up?", inside the computer. I think it'd solve a lot of financial problems, you know, sidewalks could be paid for.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I need one more motion, I need two more motions, actually, but the next motion is to approve the minutes from September ninth, two thousand fourteen.
So we'll do it.
So, all in favor? Okay.
I'm staying, I wasn't here.
Okay, and Ellen is abstaining from November nine, from September ninth?
Okay.
Anne, this is a tough one, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Some...
Are you doing your memorandum of understanding with the language?
I thought we did that at the beginning.
Yeah, when Brian and I were talking about it, as to whether or not it's just in the agenda, we thought there was nothing updated, because we did not get anything from the attorney.
I guess, I guess, and then so... So you did get...
But I think that's a good one, that makes some problems.
Good, we were... Did we actually adjourn?